I'd like to welcome everyone to our February 18th meeting that was postponed until today, especially those in our audience and those who are joining us by television. At this time, we have the roll call.
Fay Barefoot.
Here.
Lyman Hardy.
Here.
Thomas Harris.
Here.
Aaron Hines.
Yeah.
Clayton Malloy Jr., Matt Nobles.
Here.
Johnny Penner. Johnny Penner. Kenneth Ross.
Here.
Danny Smith. Mr. Chairman, we received notice that Ricky Hines will not be here tonight.
Okay, thank you. This time, we have our prayer about Fay. And Matt will lead us in the pledge, please, we all stand.
Oh God, we are thankful tonight for the privilege that we have to come and to carry on the portion of the county business. We thank you for the many blessings, and we pray for the safety of each one here tonight, and we pray that you're blessed in this meeting and meet the needs according to your will. In your name we pray, amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the Father, in the Son, and in the Holy Spirit, with liberty and justice for all. Need approval of minutes for our de-summoned 17th meeting?
Subdue.
Okay. Everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
At this time, Eric will come up and rezone a request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have one rezoning request for you tonight. Our request is from Brian Carowen. Our request is to rezone approximately 19.8 acres. It's located at the intersection of Page Road and Mills Road, parcel number 07887, from Rural Residential to Rural Agricultural Conditional District. And being a conditional district, they have to specify the specific uses that will be allowed in that district. The proposed uses, he's proposed five: landscape and horticultural services, garden center and retail nursery, outdoor fruit and vegetable market, Christmas tree sales, and blacksmithing. And a couple of those, particularly the fruit and vegetable market and the Christmas tree sales, he's indicated these will obviously be seasonal uses. And then your packet tonight, you also have a letter from Steve Spruill or a memo outlining the specific uses and what they'll be. And they're here tonight, and they can probably expand on those a little bit as well. This is the property you see here. Again, it is on the southern corner of Mills Road and Page Road. Now you see the property outlined in yellow. This is a picture of the property, looking at it from Page Road. Now this is the drive that's going in. And this is a view of the property as you see it from Mills Road. This is a view back towards the intersection of Page and Mills. And then looking towards the west on Page Road. Some adjacent properties that are located on Page Road. This is an existing house that I believe Mr. Carowen also owns. He could probably give some more information on that. And then some other existing houses towards the west of the property. This is a view on Mills Road if you're heading back towards D.H. Connolly, so towards the north. And then towards the south is if you're heading towards Blackjack, that area. And then some adjacent properties off of Mills Road, and then an existing mobile home park that's also located across from the property. Future land use plan designates the property as suburban residential. You can see there's also an area of ag, open natural resource towards the bottom, which is the floodplain area. Now, this designation is intended to include residential land uses that includes single-family and manufactured home subdivisions or parks, limited multifamily, commercial, office, light industrial, and public institutional uses that meet locational criteria. That type of criteria would include frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road, as well as spatial separation from non-compatible uses such as existing residences. This land is designated as suburban residential. It's distinguished by the greater potential for development and the inclusion of a broader range of uses. Existing land uses, you can see that the majority of the property is agricultural and undeveloped. There's existing residential uses on Page Road here, and then along Mills and Ivy Road as well. Zoning map, you see the property is currently zoned rural residential. There's existing rural agricultural to the south, as well as some general commercial located within close proximity along NC 43 towards the bottom of your screen there. The RA District is intended to accommodate very low-density residential uses, as well as associated public and institutional uses, low-intensity commercial uses, and agricultural-related industrial uses, which are interspersed through areas that are principally characterized as rural in nature. This district reflects the diverse nature of land uses within predominantly rural areas and does permit a wide array of land uses. A conditional district, as I mentioned, allows for the approval of a specific use with reasonable conditions to assure that the compatibility of the proposed use with the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties. These uses, as I mentioned before, they are all permitted uses within the RA District. This is a copy of the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. You see the entire 19.81 acres outlined in red, but the developed area really is only the area that you see shaded in yellow on the screen there. There's also approximately three acres that he's showing in the back, and that's primarily for the growing area for his, for the nursery that's proposed. A little more zoomed-in version of the site plan. There is an existing building, it should be highlighted in blue in front. That's an agricultural building that's currently out there. The, also the driveway as proposed, as long with some exist, or with some proposed parking located in the middle there, you see. There's some proposed buildings. The one in the middle here you see is a proposed office for the landscaping business, as well as some storage, and then some additional storage and shelter buildings towards debris of the property. There's a display area that's proposed for the nursery center, or the nursery and garden center. It should be noted, too, that the nursery and garden center, they're not proposing a typical garden center like you'd see in Lowe's or someplace like that. It's going to be primarily catering towards professional landscapers and providing just plants for those services. So, but they can, they can probably give you more information on that as well. They're also proposing a significant amount of vegetation out there for screening purposes, some of which has already been installed, particularly along the property line to the north. Then there's also screening that's required in our zoning ordinance for the parking area that you see as well. For staff's recommendation, we do find that the request is consistent with the land use plan, given that it meets the locational criteria for the non-residential uses within the suburban residential category. It's located at an intersection along a major secondary road, being Mills Road. Also, the site is located adjacent to existing rural agricultural zone properties. In accordance with the objectives of our land use plan, they are providing additional screening, as well as a significant separation distance between the buildings that are being proposed out there and the adjacent residences to try to minimize some conflicts between those, those uses. Staff also finds that the request is reasonable and in the public interest. The applicant has submitted as a conditional zoning, is limited only to specific uses permitted by right within the RA District. And again, also with the site plan, he's, he shows, he's shown additional screening for those uses. We find that proposed uses are appropriate for a rural location, and again, the separation and screening will minimize any adverse impacts. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the request to rezone the property from rural residential to rural agricultural conditional district. And with that, we'd now like to entertain public comments. There are quite a few people here tonight, I think, wish to speak. After that, the board will make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners are scheduled to hold a public hearing on March 16th, and at that time, they'll take action on the request. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to open up for public comments.
Okay, I have three to sign up for public comments. David Butler, if you'll come forward, you have three minutes to give your name and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Butts, and my property, our property, is adjacent to the property that's being proposed for rezoning tonight. I have two concerns. One is that the drive that has been put in since before this request was made turns out all of his traffic into, between the two houses that are on Page Road, my house and the house next door. One of the things that concerns me is the traffic pattern for the school. The school, our kids and others that come into the school in the mornings and the afternoon, when they come in off of Mills Road, they make a left turn there onto Page Road, and in actuality, they treat it as a curve. And that's a dead, it's a blind spot there. And when you, you come around that corner, you cannot see. Now, what he's proposing to use that drive for is for heavy equipment, and all of his other sales are people coming in and out on that drive. Mills Road has a, he has 242 feet of footage out there, and it gives a better line of sight for a drive on that side. You're talking about screening. He's put up bushes up as far as probably about maybe 150 feet from Page Road, and that opens a space up between my house and his drive, which will, with heavy equipment coming back and forth, is a be a commercial drive. I'm concerned about the, the traffic with the school kids and others that are coming in there. It's a 55 mile an hour speed zone. If you're coming in there with a heavy piece of equipment, and you're making a left turn in there, and somebody comes off of Mills Road into Page Road, they're right on top of you. And so it's a hazard. And my opinion is, and this is just my opinion is, that you're not, you're not setting up something that might happen. You're setting up something that's going to happen. And when you do, it's going to be a tragic situation. So I would, I would ask you not to okay this as far as the drive is concerned, that he needs to turn the drive to Mills Road where you have a better sign of, line of sight there than you do the way it is there. If you go out and look at it, you realize and understand exactly what I'm talking about. It certainly is not something that I want next door. I'll be honest with you on that. I'm not going to try to make you think I'm happy as a clam for that. I'd rather it was not there. But if it's there, you need to turn the traffic to Mills Road and turn it off Page Road, because it is a traffic hazard. Now, you can do, it's your privilege to do what you can, and I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of you for listening to me. But that is a real, real, real concern, and I'm not the only one that feels that way. Also, we have been told that... Thank you.
Mr. Clyde Griffin.
Like Mr. Butts, my name is Clyde F. Griffin. I live on Page Road. I live across from the property that Mr. Carowen is asking to have rezoned. I'm against the rezoning. Having lived out there for a number of years, it is a rural agricultural area, and I'm fine with that. I like it. That's why I live there. I don't want to be near a commercial business. I don't, as Mr. Butts just indicated, with the school traffic in the morning, the kids going to Connolly, now you're talking about adding commercial truck traffic in and out of there, in the morning and in the afternoon, when it's, when it could be hazardous. In years past, the property that Mr. Carowen operates from down, further down on Mills Road, has been a very junky piece of property. It's been cluttered, and I feel sorry for the people that have to live near it. Quite frankly, I don't want to look at it. Mr. Carowen's had a truck parked out in the middle of his field on the current property that he's talking about rezoning for five months now. They towed it down there with a strap, put it out in the field, and there it sits. And as a homeowner, I don't want to look at that. I don't want to look at the trucks coming and going. I don't want to look at his blacksmithing operation. I just think that we're a rural area, we're a farming community, and I believe that's the way it should stand. As far as the building that they indicated that is currently on the property, that building has only been built since Mr. Carowen bought the property. And it was a, supposed to be a pole barn, but it's a very nice pole barn, I'll have to admit that. It's got roll-up doors and an office in it and everything else. What I do not understand is, if Mr. Carowen had plans to, with this property, why he didn't come to you all in the very beginning and get the rezoning before he ever sunk capital into that property? He's been slowly making improvements, making improvements, making improvements, until he had to come here and get the rezoning. And to me, that demonstrates a little bit of deceptiveness, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Spruill.
Good evening, planning board members. I'm representing Mr. Carowen here tonight. I want to address one of the comments made by Mr. Butts, I guess, concerning the...
Butts.
Butts, I'm sorry, excuse me, concerning the driveway connection there. Mr. Carowen put his driveway on Page Road, and then subsequently DOT came out and talked with him about it. He did some things to make DOT happy, paid the fee, and they inspected it and said that they thought the driveway was fine. In fact, they told him they thought that that was a safer location than having that driveway on Mills Road. After hearing that there was some opposition to the driveway location, we checked with DOT, and we obtained traffic counts for these two roads. Mills Road has 5,100 cars per day that comes down it. Page Road has 330 cars a day. If you're pulling out on a road with a piece of farm equipment, or your wife and children are pulling out on the road, which road would you rather they pull out on? I think I'd rather for them to come out on Page Road, go to the stop sign, and then enter the traffic flow of Mills Road. We also talked to DOT about the proximity of his property to the intersection, whether it would be even be feasible to have a driveway on Page, on Mills Road. They indicated that the distance was borderline. We could probably get one there, but he is borderline being so close to the intersection that they would probably preclude him, in some cases, from getting one. So just from a safety standpoint, for people that are using that driveway, we think he's made the best choice that he could have. In addition, he has sunk quite a bit of money, as the last speaker just alluded, in improving the property, and that has been in an effort to be a good neighbor to a large degree. Obviously, he's in the landscaping business, so that's what he does. We have done some calculations, determined that the required vegetation cost for this project to meet the ordinance requirements is about $2,400. He has already spent over $10,000 on vegetation about out there, and probably another 10 or 15 on various cleanup items. He's hauled off some old trash and buildings that were on site. So he's made a real strong effort to be a good neighbor out there. Concerning the property line adjacent to the landowners next door, he has installed a hedge down that, that when it is mature, will be a 15-foot tall, continuous hedge that you can't see through at all. So once that vegetation is mature, I don't think his neighbors will hardly know that he's there. We don't think that what he's done is detrimental to the neighborhood. We think that he has a strong desire to be a good neighbor. He has told us he intends to build his house out there in the future and raise his family there. I don't think he would want to mess up a place that he was going to try to raise his family at in the future. We would ask you to consider favorably his request tonight, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Everybody has any questions? Okay.
You said it's on what road then? Mills Road and Page Road? How close is that to the school?
I'm not sure. I think it's within three or four or five miles, but I'm, I'm not real positive. I hadn't done a check on, on the distance to the school.
It's three or four miles back down 43 or...
Away from 43.
Which way? I'm familiar with the area, just tell me which way we're going.
It would be to the southeast, or if you're looking at it from Mills Road to the left, away from Highway 43.
How did the school get involved?
School's three or four miles down the road.
Okay. Isn't there a stoplight out there?
Not at the intersection where the property is located. Now, I don't know if there's a stop...
Now, the stoplight is, is right there on 43, going to the school.
That's right.
Either way, if you turn off of 43 going to the school, there's, isn't there a stoplight there?
I believe you're correct. I believe you are correct. We did look into the traffic count, and he gave us a historical count there, going back to year, I believe it was 2002. And interestingly enough, we did not see a big spike in the traffic on Mills Road when the school was put in service. I'm guessing it was about six or seven years ago. It did go up a little bit, but it was not a huge spike as, as one would think. But nonetheless, Mill Road is a very busy road. If you do the math, there is one car per 17 seconds coming down Mills Road. So that, that would make it pretty hard to take a farm truck and get out of that road and not be impeding traffic, or have somebody barreling down on you and making you feel like you were about to be in the middle of a wreck or something, so...
So we saying Mill Road comes when the crosshairs go across?
Right.
Yeah.
Going to that Jack.
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate those comments from each of your neighbor one of you. And Eric, if you'll come by.
And I will say, too, as far as the driveway is concerned, DOT did, we did send the site plan to DOT for their review, and as noted in your staff report, they had no comments on the drive.
As far as the driveway is concerned, how wide is that driveway?
Let's see, I can get to the...
As far as traffic, you know, coming and going?
It's, it's shown on the site plan as a 20-foot wide gravel drive.
And that's going to be wide enough for, you know, someone to turn in? I mean, is there room for, if someone's turning in and passing? I mean, 20 foot's...
Well, if you say the, the drive, it comes in and then it splits in two different directions. So I'm assuming the plan is for, is to come in, to take the right, the incoming traffic go to the right, and the outgoing traffic take the, will come in from the left side.
Mr. Chairman, may I make, come here?
Yes, sir. Come back, come back.
He's saying to you, what he just said indicates to you that this is a double driveway, which it is not, it's a single. It splits after it gets into the property, if he, he shows you that. My, my comment about the drive is not that the drive is too close to here or there, it's the traffic getting in, when coming down Mills Road and turning into Page Road, when it turns left in there, they are wheeling and dealing. And the speed limit is 55 miles an hour. We have talked about trying to get it down, and they will not do it. It is a hazard. You can say what you want to. We live there, we hear it. There are U's spinning around out there in the middle of that intersection there. It's a big, wide intersection, and he's talking about they cannot get out on Mills Road because the traffic is so fast. It's not going to be any easier for him to get out on Mills Road down at the end of Page than it is at the driveway. He's got a great, big, he's got a far more greater line of sight on Mills Road than he has on Page Road, and that's what I'm talking about. Page Road, when you come off of Mills Road and hang a left into Page Road, you're looking at a buying spot. And if you've been out there, you know what I'm talking about. And in the mornings and in the afternoons, you have to be careful there, those, that traffic coming through there, they are barreling it. It is a, it is a traffic hazard when you're sticking a heavy, heavy piece of equipment in there, two or three of them.
Okay, thank you.
I guess as far as clarification on that driveway then, so it is wide enough for a car stopped to pull out and a car to come in at the same time? Thus, thus, I mean, 20 foot, you talking about a 20-foot cover, or you talking about it's actually 20 foot wide?
It's showing right here, it says existing 20-foot gravel drive, so I'm thinking it is, it is a 20-foot wide path.
We went and looked at it on the road trip, and the end of the flares, and it's wide.
Right, so it is wide enough for, okay. I mean, that...
Just a clarification, it's about 25 foot wide for the first 30 or 40 feet off the road, and then it has the flares in addition.
And the drive, here's the drive on your screen.
Someone pulling, trying to pull in and blocking traffic, and someone pulling out.
Right. And I pulled the drive back up on your screen, so you see it is a fairly wide path there.
It's, it's wide enough. We, I went on the bit...
That's true. What needs to go out and look at this stuff?
Well, I may, I've got one other question. As far as the, the entrance to Page Road, have y'all discussed with the DOT to put a median in there so people aren't coming in there real, making that turn real fast? I mean, that would slow people down significantly.
We haven't discussed, we, we as staff have not discussed that. I don't know, based off the traffic counts, the DOT would require anything like that.
But isn't that a rural, that's a rural road, right?
Yes, sir.
Not for 300 cars.
Yeah, well, just, just thinking if there's a real problem with...
Any other comments from Eric this time? What's the pleasure of the board? Have the most approved second? Okay, everybody in favor say aye. All right, most member. This will go for the county commission. That's when they'll make the decision whether they're going to approve or not and whatever. That's where y'all need to come for the county commissioners, when they have the public here, and let them know. We were just taking comments tonight. And I appreciate every one of you coming up here.
That's right, Mr. Commissioner.
If you get a show of hands, we just want to make sure we're a few down.
That's right, Ms. Chair. Just to, just to reiterate, it is a, this is an advisory board, and so this is only a recommendation, and county commissioners will have the final say on the request on March 16th.
County commissioners do what they want to. I mean, we don't have the final say. We just advisory board to the county commissioners.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We have one other administrative item for your consideration tonight. This is an item, our committee, that has been in existence here in the county for about a dozen years. It's the Beaver Management Oversight Committee. The way it was established, this was pretty much as a result after the flooding from Hurricane Floyd. We do have a contract with the federal, a federal agency, USDA, to come in and do some trapping for sites where there are beaver activity that are causing property damage. And with that, we've got a group that meets usually quarterly, either every three or four months, and this group meets to discuss current activities and also make decisions about whether the program should continue in existence. So just an example, on the screen, you can see on the right side, that's a beaver dam. You can see a couple of guys getting ready to actually blow the dam up using some dynamite. These are trained professionals, not something that we would normally want general laypeople to do, but this particular dam's holding back about six or seven foot of water, and you can see it's encroaching into the farmland there. So this is the type of work that our trappers go about doing upon the request of the property owners that are affected. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we would certainly like to have one member, Frank Bradham had been serving in this capacity. He's rotated off the board. Would like to see who would like to serve in this, with this group. Our next meeting, just so you know, is March 10th at 10:00 a.m., so it would be a regular daytime meeting. So we would like to have one representative and also an alternate in case that representative could not be in attendance. Any volunteers?
Yeah, got a volunteer up here?
I see two thumbs up down at the end of the table.
Since I have a little problem in the back of the farm anyway, it might be a good deal for me.
I'll come with you.
Okay, I've got Mr. Penner as our regular member, and Mr. Aaron Hines as an alternate. I appreciate your willingness to come out for that, and we'll send you a notice. Anybody else want to join, too?
I think you got enough, you looked out.
All right. Other informational items, Tab is put before you tonight. Tab, you can hand it over.
Our annual report, and this is something that you should be very proud of, because you've had a lot to do with several of the items that are involved here. This particular hard copy is something that's also found on our webpage, and you can go about looking at it online if you'd like to. On the backside, you'll certainly recognize one of the items you were intimately involved with, and that was the Wedding and Event Facilities Amendment to the zoning ordinance. So just one example. Lot of other information in here, and we appreciate y'all's help over the last year. The other item that's up for your consideration or to your review tonight is our work program for this calendar year. And with this, there's a lot of information that's shown here as far as what we're planning to work on this particular year, items that'll also be impacted by your involvement as well. So not surprisingly, top up on this list...
So not surprisingly, top up on this list is the completion of the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. We have just gotten word that that is moved on to review by FEMA, so it has been approved by the state. We hope to have that back before the commissioners for approval sometime, either in the spring or summer. Several other items, staff will be very much involved with the Candlewick Sewer Project. And if you haven't heard much about that, that is a proposed sewer line extension to the Candlewick area. It's a subdivision that's located off Stanton'sburg Road. We anticipate that being in place in the next two to three years. Several community development activities, as well as our continued work with the 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness, software improvements for our permitting system. And lastly, we're starting to get really involved with some recreation plan updates, and that being for the district park in particular. So I hope you have a chance to look at that. We've got listed on here the staff members that are also involved with those particular Other items, we, when we last met in December, we told you about proposed changes to the planning and development legislation. That, in your package tonight, you'll see the information that we submitted, some of our comments that we have shared with you. That is continually being adjusted and tweaked by the group that's pretty much responsible for getting before the legislature, which, again, the intent is to have it before this legislative session this year. I've already mentioned about the Neuse River Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan update, with that being under review by FEMA now. Tony Bullock's sand mine conditional use permit was granted by the commissioners. And we also have a housing preservation grant, which is one of our community development activities that's been approved as well. There's also in your package, the monthly report for January, and a lot of other information, as well as what I've alluded to already. If you wanted, our viewing public want to go online and visit our website and see our annual report and some of the other information, the link is shown here on your screen now. So, Mr. Chairman, any questions for staff before we adjourn tonight?
What is that you, you said with him? What date?
March 10th, 10:00 a.m. And that meeting with the Beaver Management Oversight Committee will be held in the Development Services Building just across the street from here.
Right across.
Where the inspections office is located. We'll send you a notice. Okay? Any other questions? Thank you for rescheduling and willingness to come back out tonight. Hopefully, we could get you at home in time before the next round of weather hits here. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, and I appreciate everybody coming. And be careful and be safe and stay warm. Nothing else come forward, I most adjourn. All right, we adjourn.